Good? All right. Good deal. It is currently seven oh two. I'm going to call our meeting to order for the regular meetings on September ninth, 2021. I'll turn things over to Commissioner Headland to leave some indications.
Before we do that, let's think of moments following this, which thirteen service members we lost and also with the nine eleven, remembering what happened in that. We're going to thank you for today. We thank you for the opportunity to say, Lord, I just, I just lift up our nation to you. We've got a lot of stuff going on, and we're going to be there today as you have to be, like us to be with each other, et cetera, et cetera, where we include that your place. So we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear motion to approve? Motion to approve, attempt to. A first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hear none? All in favor? And any opposed? All right. Motion, Gary. Next up, we get to swear in. Ms. Robyn Anne Fosse Adams, Deputy Town Clerk, last Deputy Tax Collector.
I, Robyn James Fosse, and solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not in this particular area, and that I will take my own impartiality and my own responsibility in charge and I have the duty of my office as Deputy Town Clerk and Deputy Tax Collector and as the Tax Collector for the town of Nellis, where according to the best of my skills, ability, and judgment, I would like to.
I mean, you still have the board if you wanted to get a speech. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing. Item A here is a request to rezone property at the end of Weather Street, ten number eighteen forty-two dash eighty-nine dash nine one one four, from industrial to mixed. I will go ahead and open the hearing to the public as of seven oh five and turn it over to Ms. Klinger to give us a staff report.
So, as you said, this parcel is located at the cul-de-sac of Weather Street between Weather Street and Holden Road. The applicant intends to construct a one hundred and twenty unit townhome complex on this property and the property directly to the south that is adjacent to Holden, which cannot be done within the parameters of the industrial zoning district. The adjacent property is already zoned MU one. So the property is bounded by MU one zoning to the south and MU two and SFR two zoning to the east, both of which are compatible with the proposed MU one zoning. While the parcels to the west and the north are still zoned industrial, a minimum thirty-five foot wide type A buffer would be required between this parcel and adjacent parcels, otherwise zoned, so as to provide for proper screening. The plan has also been discussed with the U.S. One Planning Council and NC DOT and does account for the backage road from the U.S. One corridor study that is shown in between Weather Street and Holden and also allows for future connection north between Weather Street and Mosswood Boulevard and Jeffrey Way. The rezoning is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan, and while it is inconsistent with the future land use map, which shows the subject property as an employment or manufacturing use, the rezoning could still be approved and would just have the effect of amending the future land use map, similar to the four twenty south cross street rezoning that was approved last month. The planning board voted four to one at their August meeting to recommend approval of this rezoning, and staff is recommending approval as well. And that is all I have.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners, Ms. Klinger? All right. Hearing none. I will go ahead and open up for comments from the public. All right. Hearing no comments from the public, I will go ahead and close the hearing as of seven oh eight and move along into citizens' comments. Do we have anyone in the tent who would like to make a citizen's comment? I'm going to make one real quick while the train's going through. It's going to be cool to actually be in another setting where we don't have to be interrupted by the train. So that's going to be super awesome. All right. Go ahead and move along into item six, which is the consent agenda. The action requested here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All right. We've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right. Hear none? All in favor? And any opposed? Motion, Gary. There's no old business, so we'll get right into new business, which, item A under new business is the request to rezone property at the end of Weather Street, ten number eighteen forty-two dash eighty-nine dash nine one one four. Action requested here is to approve rezoning request as proposed. All right. We've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote?
Can I just make sure I know what we're talking about? I think that I do. And I have a map pulled up. And is this going to back up the oral vote? Are we talking about this right now, right? Yes. This is going to back up the oral vote, is correct. But will all of the traffic go on Weather Street or is someone going to go towards Holden?
I did not, I did not hear the last part of that question.
You want to say?
Well, I was asking if all of the traffic would get there through Weather or are we also opening up a new street from Holden Road?
Yes, there will be a connection from Holden as well. The street will go from, they'll install a new street from Weathers to Holden.
So I'm getting all that connection to Holden.
This will be right across from the other development, the cross town boulevard or truck route.
Yeah.
They will meet up right across from Holden, right there. So it would be a parallel path through to US one. And eventually, they're going to be connected through the other way, so you can go Jeffrey Way that comes out one head of there. Ms. Klinger, did we get any kind of feedback or any reporting from the body?
They're not consulted at this point because this is not to approve the plan. They don't even have to submit a plan with the rezoning. This is just the request to rezone. The fire department will be consulted at the time that they do the development agreement.
The fire department will be involved once they, so this would have to be rezoned first before they even submit a plan. Once the plan's submitted, then the fire department will be involved, but until that point, they wouldn't have. Yep, yep. Trust me, if I know the fire department as well as I do, they would, they would be all over it because I remember the, there was another set of plans at one point, and Assistant Chief Rainey was like, mm, yeah. But I know they'd be all over it.
So clearly, I know that you guys are also all over, noticing, right, that the people that live in Richland, people were notified?
Yeah.
I'm just surprised those different people are hearing this right there. What kind of a buffer does there seem to be? And can it just be neighborhood, keep it as presidential as it may?
They would have, there's a, going to be a twenty-five foot wide type B buffer required between this parcel and Richland North.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? As I say, one thing I do like about this design, and I know we're not talking about the development right now, but the parking is in the rear of these units. And so if you're looking at that map, traffic coming through won't be as far as people pulling out of the driveways, so that it'll have access to the parking on the rear side. All right. Any additional discussion? Okay. We've got a first, we've got a second, we've been through discussion. All in favor? And any opposed? Okay. All right. As soon as I heard the mumbles, I was like, okay. So motion carries there. Item D is resolution for receiving federal funds under the American Rescue Plan Act for the HARP Act. All right. We've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hear none? All in favor? And any opposed? Motion, Gary. Item C, resolution approving public sponsorship of a special event, which is the Youngsville Fall Festival. Something we pretty much do every year. Do I hear any motion to approve? We've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right. Hearing none? All in favor? And any opposed? Motion, Gary. The portion of the business, I do want to, because I wasn't here for the pop-up event to support and back our brothers and sisters in blue. I hear that it was a very good turnout, so I'm very glad to hear about that. Hopefully, there's some, some money raised that we can support, solid the top and do all that stuff, so very excited about that. Also excited about the Fall Festival coming up. Terry, I know you and Kiwanis, get a ton of volunteers out there, and it'll be flawless. And I just want to put on the record, there's a certain soccer team in Franklin County that is undefeated and ranks number one in the state in three A. And we see in the articles written about it in the local newspaper. So since, since no one from the newspaper wants to write about it, I figured I would speak it into existence, and hopefully, that team can do some really good things. So very excited about that. Other than that, I'm glad to cool down a little bit, and that's all I've got. Mr. Page.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The only thing that I had was that I see on the downtown Main Street plant project, we're at a bit of an inflection point due to material shortages, where we can either force the contractor to hand, but it will likely have a much protracted building time, or we can work with the contractor, lock in current prices on the materials, wait a little bit longer for them to start, but their build time will be as short as possible. And I wanted to get some direction from the commission as to whether they were interested in forcing the contractors to get started earlier, which would likely lead to an earlier ending, or if they wanted to work with the contractor here as much as possible, which would lead to a later ending, but would have the streets more left to run.
What, how much different is the time I was talking?
It would probably be a few months, and my recommendation would be to minimize the impact on the downtown as much as possible, which is going to be option C.
Right.
Well, wait, can you tell what's in my mind, sorry? Right, Gary?
Just invite me back. Please, a lot of my work here. Well, man, I think from a standpoint of, because, you know, there's, there's going to be traffic impacts. We've already got traffic concerns now, but, you know, the traffic impacts are going to be a little bit more exacerbated. So I would say whatever we can do to minimize, which would be the right play. I don't want to speak for the rest of the commissioners, but, I mean.
Someone who's having trouble. I think, Mr. Johnson receives the government's directive to finish the project.
Yeah. When I think the pipe. When I think part of the situation is even the pipe that Public Facility is wanting to install, wanting to be around until April. So even then, we're already behind the eight ball a little bit, so.
The hardest part is the water lines, and it's no way to get hold of water lines for months now. And unfortunately, the water lines, they have to go under the road until the road can go back on top of the block. The water line is there, they can start the project, we can tell them, hey, guys, we need to start next week. They don't come to start, but they're going to be poured out and filled.
And I think that was impressive in town. I think that people were waiting in town for that, for anyone else.
You know, that's better to look like the first time versus having to do it over. The main problem right now is, here's my business plan, we didn't get time, because it's basically stolen. Special time to stop, not to, so we can actually save.
All right. So, I mean, that sounds like pretty much consensus. All right. Okay. All right. Now, I'll start with Commissioner Johnson. You got anything for the?
Thank you for your support for the faith. And just that I haven't been here to please, and I'm sure they felt the way that I said. But I see out there, I think, or I did work, and thank you. Just a couple of initiatives. I've been in New Orleans for the last two weeks, in the area of New Orleans, home, pretty And you can tell the area, they had plans together in the big city, out in the South of the, those areas, I bounced back a little bit, but there is like, oh, Louisiana's down there, it was both the best places in the state to live. It is very nice, very old towns like this. But when you go to a map of a disaster like that, you see people in the community that really want folks to get back to life before a bit like that happened. Unfortunately, a little bit, everybody knows about that area, but it's not, there are areas that are very poor, there are areas that are very not poor. But had a very big plan, they have initiatives already together as far as traffic lines, police departments, all the emergency management, those are all working together, and just step without the community. It's a very good thing to see, because I see that in where we live at. Folks, helping folks, doing all that they can of people who don't have as much as you may have. But it's always good to, you know, every time I get to go to that, because I've been in Louisiana the last three years, just a lot of people live in there, and, you know, the takeaway that I get, you know, when I come back home, seeing things that probably wasn't seen before by my eyes, that they didn't see before, or something like that took place. But I know we have, I know we have good leadership, and we have willing people that want to help, and also, we have a very good support system as far as our, you know, our police, fire, rescue, you know, just makes me feel comfortable. I go back here in New Orleans, we ever had anything like that. Not the best magnitude of where we live, and you could actually know it's not crazy. This is just a desert. But, you know, coming back home is always good. And, you know, seeing things like fall stuff in the state of life, in the crazy world we live in, it's great. So it's always going to be crazy.
So the second best place to live in Louisiana is the second best Youngsville in the United States. I fell off that noise, but I don't care. Commissioner White. Mr. Wiggins?
Some questions. Please go on Main Street.
I don't know if it's been there quite that long, and I want to tell you a little bit about why it's there. Those are our spare cars, and those are a little bit older, and we've been trying to move them around. The server goes far than the O two distributor from ordering down town, those kinds of things like that. It is approaching, it's probably service life or what it's been doing. I'm very impressed with this. We do these familiar type vehicles at this point, but we'll continue to rotate it around town and do it off the main street rather than.
I'm basically completely blocking the traffic. I disagree with it at all. I can't say that these people.
Well, I can, I can speak, if you don't mind me speaking on your behalf. I have seen it in action at Speedway. And I would see people pull in the Speedway that, I guess, they were going in for whatever reason, saw that car, and just kept letting them go and pull back out of the parking lot. So I think there is some validity to having that there.
I'm the real servant.
No servant, go ahead.
The mayor and commissioner, we also had similar account at the Dollar General here, where we had one in Florida, too, that the managers opposed to work the Dollar General system of their traffic increase.
My son happened to pass through the intersection, just passed through the four or five, it was, uh, the driver, he left kind of through the intersection, did not stop. Officer was right there, far enough between three of those vehicles, kind of trying to move it off, but was stolen or not. For once, he says, God, we said, we're not for one.
If there's anything else left, Mr. Wiggins? All right. Commissioner Headland?
I have a few things. I'm wrapping up my duties in Franklin County Chamber, so, you know, fun to talk about a little bit. It would be good to have a person set up and do that, that momentum, maybe the first, third estate of every month, at eight thirty to have a hotel that's been virtual, but I think they're having some in person. There is a vendettas, so it's not just, not try to be the law with that. Just that why I'll speak it in the back of your mind, I'll have probably, well, maybe two more of these, and I would hate to see that discontinued. We've been running the elderly communities, particularly like you, so please keep going. That's just a question. A Fall Festival is September twenty fifth, the ninth and three. We'll have vendors selling their merch, food trucks, donkey house, games for kids, big card shows, and so. And Franklin soccer team is going to be there volunteering, talking about holding kids.
Oh, you mean that undefeated team that's number one in three A that can't get any breath in the newspaper? Oh, that team, yeah.
Without, without, that would be hard to beat. Anyway, that would probably be my, well, that will be my question. And same day, the Franklin County change the fund day from two to eight P O, and field and charts, and they're grabbing up the trucks, but I can speak to those trucks that can grab them up, you know. By your Vicodin, I'm a hundred bucks, so those would be pretty close. That's it.
All right. Thanks, sir. And Mr. Bray. Because of the way our meeting was pushed back last time, I haven't had any camp or jabber meetings in between. But I did want to thank Southern Blessings and Youngsville Police Department for putting on the pop-up bar for you. Special thanks to Captain Muggsy for joining me in the dump tank that we do. That was fun and very welcome on that hot day. Next time we do that, let's rinse the mud out of the bottom before we fill it up. I know that was the fire department that did that, but anyway, that was fun and I enjoyed it. That's all I have. All right. Thanks, sir. Ms. Pat Mopla?
I'm running, cancel power.
All right. We've got, I guess, Mr. AC right here, so we've got that in our packet, we've got parts mixed up in our packet. Ms. Klinger, planning the zoning, do you have any additional updates for us?
I do not.
All right. Thank you. Chief Whibley?
I don't have anything to add.
All right. And Mr. Smith with Public Works?
We have good news. Nathan might not even be over there at this yet, but it's six forty-five, we just got an email for confirmation that it's possible. The Public Works goes, beginning Monday, you evacuate the two Bay to Rock and spark living in our new place.
There is, congratulations on that.
We'll start, the first day should be, we'll start moving out Monday. Nathan and I can probably set up a whole town, perhaps we have that town. See, there's a couple of functions that I know they're going to have to do that are probably technical, we could come to this. Probably we're on that already. What the email is, if we'll see, there's a couple things that the VA do to appoint the inspector, who has passed with, but that's going to be a couple of days, probably, he's going to finish up. But we should be able to do something, probably earlier, you know, October, once we get everything set up. Still doing a good job with that garbage, pick up some cement. Just several parts of the progress that we've, there are two, the major health trucks, the government's done, so we shouldn't have to worry about hiccups. One spot I got a check in the morning on the automated truck, but I actually pretty much got that knocked out, where we just have to worry about hiccups on that. They're old trucks, but I think now that we're on top of them, we should have a lot better result coming, coming out of them.
Well, there's generally four new ones, I'm going to have to infer.
If we still got a proposed order, what we do, just go down in the, like, we'll, this is a third when, on your day of service, and we'll come by, I've got my phone.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Eddie Robert John?
I don't have any public goods to report, but I did want to let you all know that on the non-public goods that I've been handling for the calendar month, I have had to make a lot of requests now for help, and those requests have been that much enthusiasm and energy about the policy. I just wanted to say, let you all know that, this guy was excellent, and to say thank you to that for all the help he gave me. I sincerely, my tire, my, just wanted to send a message, a message, so.
Understood, understood. Thank you for that. And we'll wrap it up. Madam Clerk, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
We'll be starting our Christmas prayer meeting within the next couple of weeks. In theory, nothing should really change, we should just follow the same route, remain right out and everything. We had previously talked about, apparently, just a closed and doing something separate instead of sharing the place that we have. But helping to the older deploy company, it only sets five to four young people. Yes, approximately thirteen straight on that, two or three. So it would be very close to the same place, I do have a picture of the little, and the other place is to window test and home. We voted for a full place, so it is up to you if you want to wait for next year and do a separate place and just continue as we are, or if you get a third place, which is, I'm not sure which one it will be and what it will look like. If we get our own place this year, we can go at the beginning of the parade. If we get our own close this year, we can go at the beginning of the parade, we have the board at the march, at the grand march. It's something that we have not known before, um, and it was the three professional places.
When would, when would we know if they could get that float?
If y'all want to go that direction, I can email him tomorrow and do a schedule for us and have a picture of the public later than that. I think if they want to make sure that we need it and then he needs to, you know, keep the different kinds, you know, he's got several, that's why I need to, so some folks that he's done, well, he's been reused a little later than that day. So once that, that three hours together, who's more would take him, he seriously works for a place, he's doing, he's doing it all for us. So we did go there for the full flight this year.
Yeah, I kinda feel like we should say priority, seeing as how we actually kept them in business last year, nobody else did, but.
But he did, like, he did set five to two, and it's something that we're gonna continue to do, and we can make sure he sets five three, um, this year or next year. So y'all want me to move forward online, we got other clothes out over tomorrow.
Take a look and see, I mean, if it's already budgeted, I would say go ahead and take a look at it and see, if he can't get it, then I guess we could just always have the, the yammer float as, as fallback, I mean, I'd say that way.
Make sure next year that he can, that's about, um, have a journey for next year.
Correct.
I'll be at the end of the year, and it's not a question.
All right.
And then it's.
Okay. Uh, no need for closed session, uh, so it is time to adjourn, or any standing motion to adjourn? Second. All right, I've got a question, second, any discussion for this, but hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
We are.